Welcome councillors to the Ordinary Council Meeting of Ararat Rural City for the 6th of May 2020. I should like to open the meeting with a reminder about procedural matters as per the guidelines issued by the Minister for Local Government. The prescribed period from the 1st of May 2020 to the 1st of November 2020 stipulates that councils do not need to provide for members of the public to physically attend meetings. Providing public access to live-streamed events satisfies the public attendance test during the prescribed period. Live streaming. Council is keen to engage with members of the community and now livestreams the formal council meetings to make them accessible. The stream will be available to view on Ararat Rural City Council's Facebook page from 6pm and on council's website www.ararat.bic.gov.au from Thursday morning following the council meeting. You do not require a Facebook account to watch the live broadcast. Simply enter www.facebook.com/araratruralcitycouncil into your address bar. Councillors, can you please stand for the traditional acknowledgement, opening prayer and councillor's pledge, starting with the traditional acknowledgement from councillor Braithwaite?
We acknowledge the traditional owners of the land in which we meet today and pay our respects to their elders, past present and emerging.
The opening prayer from councillor Deusch.
Almighty God, we humbly ask you to help us, a selected council of the Ararat Rural City Council, guide our deliberations, prosper what is in your will for us, to your honour and glory and for the welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in the Ararat Rural City.
And the councillor's pledge from councillor Beals.
We will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interest of the people of the municipal district of the Ararat Rural City Council and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion festing in us under the Local Government Act 1989 or any other act to the best of our skill and judgement.
Thank you councillors and Mr CEO please take a seat. Is that back? No one do.
The new act has been declared but we still operate under the transition theory councillor Braithwaite.
So we have no apologies. The next item on our agenda is the confirmation of minutes. We have a recommendation that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 17th of March 2020 be confirmed. Thank you councillor Allgood, the mover, and the secondder councillor Deusch. We'll call for the vote on that motion. Those in favour and that is carried. Thank you. Item 1.5 Declaration of Disclosure of Interests. Councillors, are there any declarations? We have none. Mr CEO, we have none. Thank you. The next item, 1.6 Admission of Urgent Business. Councillors, is there anybody who would like to report urgent business? We have none. Thank you. Section 2 Public Participation. We have no petitions that have been received. Thank you very much Dr Tim and we move to section 3 Reports requiring Council Decision. Item 3.1 The Draft Council Plan 2017-2021 Incorporating the Strategic Resource Plan. Mr CEO, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you Madam Mayor. Council have presented tonight with year four of the council plan 2027-2021, which I guess brings council's work for its four-year term to an end. So it's the culmination of that plan that you put in place four years ago, which must seem like longer and short sometimes, who knows? But I guess it's important to continue through the same flavour of that plan, plan focusing on provision of key services to the community, ensuring a smooth transition to a new elected council, that's an important part of our plan this year, and also developing a strong and sustainable local economy. Really, really key elements of what we're trying to do there. The Strategic Resource Plan, I guess, really presents the driver of council in terms of efficiency and effectiveness of council as an organisation, but also delivering significant returns in terms of capital works programmes and so forth to the Ararat Rural City community. So I think, I guess I commend the plan to council as the fourth year of culmination of their four-year term. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions councillors? Very good. There being no questions, we have a recommendation in five parts that council, just to summarise, receive the, have the revised draft council plan incorporating the strategic resource plan adopted, that we make that available for public exhibition. We invite interested persons to make a written submission to council by no later than 5.15pm on Friday the 5th of June. We authorised the CEO to administer this process and to note also that should any person wish to be heard in support of their written submission, that may be heard by our set of special council meeting if required on Wednesday the 10th of June.
If I could Madam Mayor, my apologies. Special council meeting status actually exists under the new act, so it will just be a council meeting if required. Well, I've meant the recommendation.
Strike the special from that recommendation.
They're all special of course.
Yes, naturally. Councillors, do I have somebody to move? Thank you councillor Hull, the mover of the motion, and a secondder is councillor Braithwaite. Do you wish to speak elsewhere?
Yes, I do. Thank you Madam Mayor and I'll sit if that's fine. And I'll read it because the documents tonight are quite complex and I think it's important to get it right. The mayor and CEO's message in the documents outlines the major goals embedded in the four-year plan incorporating the strategic resource plan. This and the next item on the agenda, item 3.2 covering the draft budget and rating strategy, are the results of considerable work by the CEO, his staff and with much councillor input. They have been developed in the unique circumstances of a pandemic with citizens enduring significant social and financial stress and endeavouring to provide for community needs while minimising the financial impact on residents and rate payers. Some examples of what the action plan hopes to achieve are: hold a major cultural festival, for locals to enjoy and bring increased visitation and a much-needed boost for local businesses, commence development of female-friendly change rooms at the Valora Recreation Reserve, complete implementation of skate park lighting and start planning for upgrades at the leisure centre and outdoor peels. These are just some examples of what's embedded in the strategy and the documents and the plan and it's really worthwhile the community reading themselves to get the full picture. We also plan to complete a waste management strategy that incorporates the government's new policy aimed at recycling and minimising waste going to landfill. Funding the strategic resource plan includes an allocation of 16.45 million in capital expenditure including 3.064 metres million on property, 12.376 million on infrastructure and 3.064 million on property and equipment. There is much-needed expenditure aimed at improving the local road network. I commend both the action plan and the funding allocation.
Thank you councillor Hull. Would any other councillor like to speak to the motion?
Yes Madam Mayor, I'd just like to make the, to point out that we're looking for submissions if anybody isn't happy with the revised council plan. I think that's very important also to read along with what councillor Hull has said to see if they agree with what council's direction is taking in these troubled times.
Thank you councillor Allgood. No councillors wishing to speak further to the motion, or against? Very good. That being the case, we'll put that recommendation in five parts to the vote. Those in favour and against and that is carried. Thank you councillors. Moving now to item 3.2 The Draft Budget of 2020 and 2021. Mr CEO, can you please speak?
Thank you Madam Mayor. I guess this is where the rubber hits the road in terms of how we fund our council plan, the fourth year of our council plan. It's a very important year as I think a number of councils have spoken about COVID-19 was an unprecedented event and has had an unprecedented impact on our community, something that very few of us could have a recollection of, similar impacts in living memory. And I guess we have to frame our budget and our council plan within the context of that. And we've worked to produce a budget where we attempt to maintain relativities in rating burden between the rating sectors as they exist in the municipality. We've looked to ease the impact of rate rises on individual rate payers during this time. We appreciate that whole ranges of businesses across every business sector in our municipality are facing a burden through COVID-19 and also to avoid issues of rate shock as a number of councils have identified as we've been building the budget process. As such, we presented a budget model which does two things. It looks to maintain the relativities between the rating sectors, the general rate, farm rate, bit commercial and industrial rate and also we've included a 1% rate cut across the board which should, the compound impact of those two features should mean that the average rate across all of the four sectors will decrease in 2020, 2021. That'll of course, there'll be some movement within those areas based on valuations, but the overall rate in most of our four sectors will decrease during 2020, 21, which I think is a very good outcome for the community. And I guess it's also retaining a dividend for the work we've done over the last, together in the last 18 months around improving efficiency and effectiveness of the organisation as it stands as well. That's a dividend for the community to be provided along with the zero rate cut two years ago. So I guess that we're moving in that right direction. Councillors, do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Councillors, any questions? We have had extensive discussion on this budget and the associated council plan and strategic resource plan to this point and I would just like to congratulate the CEO and staff on the work that has gone into getting the organisation to this point where a dividend can be returned to the community and we're able to invest in our ongoing sustainability in this way. Any questions councillors?
Just want to say, off the cuff, it's a wonderful budget. I hope that all the rate payers appreciate the hard work that has been done by the CEO and by the staff. It could not have been done by any other person I think.
We'll take that as a comment councillor Deusch. We're actually looking for questions for the CEO at this point of the meeting, thank you.
I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, we have councillor Beals moving the recommendation in seven parts as it stands in the meeting documents. Do I have a seconder? Thank you councillor Hull, seconding the motion. Would you like to speak?
Certainly, and I've taken a few notes too. It's a sign of having to wear glasses and not having as good a memory as I used to. Today, we have endorsed our council plan to seek public comments which sets the way forward for the council to meet the expectations of our community. Very well spoken by councillor Hull as to where we're going. I'll be brief and commend everyone to read the budget. Recently, we're seeing the deep and far-reaching effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. Council has a fundamental role in steering our community and business through these unique times without relying on other levels of government to prop us up. This budget keeps us on the course to fulfil council's unique role as the closest member of government to the people. Council could have put forward a status quo budget or made a slash and boom cuts, a tax service and stopped any attempts to deal with the infrastructure gap. We have not done that. We could have taken extensive loans at unbelievably cheap rates, but this would have been paid back and the only way to pay back loans is through rates or user charges. Council cannot just print money or raise the scope of funds state and federal governments can't. We have not delegated extra responsibilities to the CEO or still down-staffed as many other councils have done. In 2018, council did not have a rate rise, effectively cutting the rate. In 2019, we had the statutory cap rise of 2.5% and at the same time reducing the industrial and commercial rates. This year, whilst continuing to improve services and facilities, we will not be having any rate cap rise and in fact we'll be reducing the rate by 1%, effectively a 3% cut. In reality, this council has used its resources and the commitment of all to reduce our ongoing costs that can be seen in this budget, which is part of the commitment we gave to the community to have an efficient, equitable distribution of services. This budget is a sign of the dividend that has come through the community from the changes we have made. And when I say 'we', I'm talking about the councillors, the CEO, the staff, the casual staff. Every staff member has made a really strong effort before the virus occurred to get us into a better position and because we're in a better position, we can deal with this and keep moving without damaging our whole community.
Councillor Beals and councillor Hull, did you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, I do. And probably some of what I've got to say is, has already been said by the CEO and councillor Beals, but I don't think it hurts to reinforce those comments. The rating strategy and budget have been developed considering detrimental cost impact of the pandemic restrictions on residents and businesses. The state government rate cap of 2% recognises that council costs have risen 2% over the last year. The draft budget aims to ease the rate burden by not increasing rates by 2% and maintain current expenditure, but instead cut expenditure by 1%. Full marks for the CEO and his staff for working hard to trim the budget and make the 1% rate cut achievable and this is done without impacting on services. The draft rating strategy on which rates per property are determined maintains the relativity in rates paid between each of the four sectors, general, commercial, industrial and rural, as it was in 2019, 2020. This strategy means rate payers should not see increases in their rates unless the value of their property has changed because of the recent property valuation. To sum up, now it's the community's turn. They should study the plans presented tonight. They can either agree with the draft plans or provide a submission that councillors will take into consideration before the final plans are presented for adoption next month. Rate payers, it is now your turn to have your input, make the most of it.
Thank you councillor Hull. Any other, yes councillor Braithwaite?
Thank you. I endorse all of those comments from the mover and seconder. But I think we need to clearly point out to people who are watching this tonight that this budget includes a reduction in the farm rate to 0.47 from 0.55. Now, in the life of this council, we went through the most transparent and engaging rates strategy review with a working group and a citizens' jury and we are doing this in the space of a month at a time when we cannot properly and adequately undertake a consultation process. And I have serious misgivings about that. Otherwise, I support the rate cut, I support the zero rate rise and I support this going out for consultation and I'll reserve my judgement on it until I've heard that consultation.
Thank you councillor Braithwaite. Councillor Allgood.
Yes Madam Mayor, thank you. Just a couple of things I'd like to say. I'd just like to congratulate the CEO on the fact that we've been able to retain all our staff and find jobs for them and that's because of the kindness of the state government and federal government. We've still got monies to spend but even saying that, you have to be very careful how you go about it and how you do it. I feel very sorry for the people in Barclay Street because they pay their rates and we've taken that into consideration. As has already been mentioned, we've also looked at the farming area as well. So as far as I'm concerned, I sit here very pleased and proud with what we've been able to achieve because I see that, you know, we've been able to cover all the bases, we've kept all our staff. I think that everyone's done just a great job and I know that as councillors, we sit around here and take the credit but in a lot of cases, a lot of cheering out of their ear of the CEO trying to make this balance and a lot of work going on behind the scenes. And, you know, even though we haven't got the doors open, the staff are still working very hard behind the scenes and I think that that needs to be recognised as well, that, you know, this hasn't just happened. This has been a really hard slog for everyone and I'm supporting the motion as well.
Thank you councillor Allgood. Councillor Deusch, you gave a comment earlier in discussion around this item. Thank you. Well councillors, we have the recommendation in seven parts. I'll put this to the vote. Oh sorry, bigger pardon. Thank you for stopping me from rattling straightforward councillor Beals and possibly closing the debate.
Are you going to make any comments?
I wish to speak in favour of this motion. I think that the thought and consideration that has gone into this budget and the rating strategy has been considerable and is entirely consistent with the spirit of the intention of our rating strategy as set in 2018. But the equity of rate burden is something that we need to strive to maintain across our community and it's a reflection of the investment that we are prepared to make as a council. The strategic direction we are taking in ensuring that our community is in its best position to be able to recover, not just recover, but also grow from the stresses and challenges of the pandemic across our community, both socially and economically. So I'm very proud of the work that's gone into this and most definitely am speaking in favour of that. Councillor Beals, would you like to give your vote?
Can I just say Barclay Street is a bit of a concern and it's a reverse actual concern. It's actually a wee bit too busy at present moment. The people are not obeying social distancing rules. We've been very lucky. Some businesses have done well, some are actually gutted, the hotels are gutted there. Whether they actually come back from it, I don't know if they actually physically can. But we, our budget has got nothing to do with the kindness of state or federal governments. They may be kind to pensioners, people who have been forced out of employment. What state and federal governments give to us for projects are projects as they see it that have merit and we have an even budget for them in here. They have a cream on the cake. I am fairly sure we will get other projects up and running, other road projects in the line. But we haven't gone out begging with a bowl in our hands, you know, to state and federal governments saying, give me, give me, give me. We've done the work. We've got the whole community with us because we've maintained our integrity and our integrity in relation to the burden of rates, I think will show up very well when the state government ever returns their rating review. The point of this of course is that the public will have their say. It's not a decision tonight. We'll get submissions and at that meeting, I guess we'll have a full and robust debate. So close the debate then. Thank you Madam.
Thank you councillor Beals. So the recommendation in seven parts, I'll put that to the vote. Those in favour and against and that is carried. Thank you councillors. Moving to item 3.3 The Quarterly Performance Report. Mr CEO.
Thank you Madam Mayor. This is our third quarterly performance report for the year. As I say every time we receive this report, it's never a complete set of data because we're dealing with, I guess, a jagged flow of revenues in terms of the rates when they come in. There is a correction to make actually. On page 17, the middle indicator percentage of total rates collected, it is more than 38%. It's actually 80% at this point in time. So hopefully that dispenses your concerns about that one. And I guess the key issues are nominally, we've got cash surplus of about $4.9 million at this point in time, but that's largely because we have collected more than three quarters of the rates for the year. That's got a fair bit to do with it. But also there'll be other expenses that will occur in the next quarter that will take us back on. I'm assuming we'll have a cash surplus of some kind. It won't be $4.98 million, I can assure you. And apart from my usual issue around the, like, our federal Commonwealth State Ramps land with us, they're often prepaid or they're forward paid to us. That impacts on some indicators as well. But our budget is tracking very, very well for the year. I don't have too many concerns at this point in time, regardless of the impacts of foreign dollars.
Very good. Now does some relate certainly. Councillors, any questions for the CEO? There being none, we have a recommendation, comprehensive income statement, balance sheet, statement of cash flows and financial performance indicators for the period ended 31 March 2020 be received and adopted. I have the mover in councillor Beals and the seconder in councillor Deusch. You wish to speak councillor Beals?
No, I self-explanatory.
Councillor Deusch, no other comments? Councillor Hull?
I'll just make one off the cuff comment and that if you examine these figures, data thoroughly, you will realise that during the past year, the CEO and his staff have made some significant adjustments and pruned sections of the budget quite well and we should thank them for the work that they've done in that regard.
Very good. And no other comments councillors? That being the case, we'll put the motion to the vote. Those in favour and against, that is carried. Item 3.4 Council Policy Review and we have three policies up for review as per the schedule, the review schedule timeframes. Mr CEO.
Thank you Madam Mayor. There are three policies here for review. We're actually, I'm recommending we rescind two of those. The first is a disposal on purchase of materials at transfer stations. That more properly should be an organisational policy and procedure administered by myself under our code of conduct process rather than a council policy. It seems like overkill in that space. So I'm recommending we rescind that one and that'll be replaced with a more appropriate administrative policy within the organisation. The second one is a protective disclosures policy and there's actually a requirement now in the Public Interest Disclosures Act. There's been a review and revision of that and now we are required to have a public interest disclosures procedure, which is again an administrative procedure administered by myself. So in fact the protected disclosures policy is no longer required and we can actually present that for rescission as well. And we've already got the new public interest disclosures policy on our website that the community have looked at. So that's why I'm giving the materials for council meeting. And as I joked the other day, this is probably our fourth annual review of procurement policy for the year, but I think it's very good to see our procurement officers keeping on top of changes and requirements there. They were highlighted in the policy for you to see where the changes were made and they're very straightforward. Largely oriented to some centralisation of collecting quotations for expenditure over $10,000 so we can keep an eye on that centrally within the organisation. So I think that's all I really understand. That one. Was there any questions from councillors?
Any questions councillors? No. That being the case, we have the recommendation in two parts that council rescind the disposal and purchase of materials at transfer stations policy and the protected disclosures policy and adopt the procurement policy. Do I have somebody to move that motion? Councillor Hull and a seconder, councillor Deusch. Thank you councillor Hull.
Nothing to add. The CEO has covered all the changes.
Thank you councillor Beals.
Those are legislative requirements, should be followed in.
Yes, exactly right. Any other comments from councillors? I'd just like to remind the community that there are quite a number of council policies available for your perusal on the council website. So please avail yourself of that opportunity if you have any interest in following up on the policy enacted by or enabled by council. The recommendation in two parts has been moved and seconded. I'll put that to the vote councillors. Those in favour and against, that is carried. Section 4 Committee Minutes and Reports. Item 4.1, section 86 Committees of Management Minutes. These are going to be ancient history before too much longer, aren't they Mr CEO?
We will go and look at these with nostalgia soon, that's for sure.
We will indeed.
Moving to our asset management committees and SCAAC committees won't exist under provisions of the new act. But we do have minutes from three committees, the Anfamr Law Committee, the Onondah Public Law Committee, the Royal Reserve Committee. I think you have provided with minutes of those in the information pack and they're here for council to receive.
Very good.
Just a question to the CEO. So this means that there will be no council representation on any of those committees because those committees don't exist?
Those know that they'll be replaced by what are called asset management committees councillor Braithwaite.
Ten of the councils will be on that.
They're actually administered by the chief executive under the act from now on.
So we are being removed from this community function?
Well yes, it could be interpreted in that way, that's for sure. Yeah.
I think the question Bill was asking, effective immediately or effective?
It'll be, there's a phasing in process. I think it's by the 1st of September we need to.
This is a future retrograde step.
This is not a council decision. It's not a council decision, it's a government.
Yeah, it's elective.
It's removing the council from direct contact in their area of responsibility with the community. I think it's a totally retrograde step.
Well, that is noted councillor Braithwaite. There was extensive consultation, obviously in the review of the act and this is how it stands.
It's not us doing it.
It's not us doing it, no, that is right. It is a state government law. So, well, legislation I should say. Councillors, there being no further questions for the CEO. We have a motion, a recommendation in three parts that we received the minutes of those meetings. Councillor Allgood to move and councillor Beals is seconding. Councillor Allgood, do you wish to speak?
Yes, I do. I just think that, I agree with councillor Braithwaite and all of his saying about the removal of councillors from these committees. In all the years I've been here, these committees have been absolutely brilliant and if you read the minutes fully, you'll see the amount of time, effort and responsibility that they take on in those small communities. that they take on in those small communities. And I for one am pretty sad about the fact that they're going to be taken away because I see that initial contact between the councillors and what our community needs, that is the gateway that we can actually work together and truly represent these people. Taking us out of the equation to me is certainly a backward step because I've always enjoyed going out there. Uh, it's, it's the actual contact with the people and it's conversations after the meetings that, you know, sometimes they don't like to ask a question, that they will come out and I'll say, you know, do you know what's happening about X, Y, Z? And we can come home and we can actually ring the CEO or the staff and actually see what's going on. And I think this is just a backward step, and I just wonder how many people within these small communities realise that this is going to be taken away from them. I, I just, I just have fear with the fact that, you know, this is going to be dumped on them and they're going to feel like we've left them, not that it's part of an act, but we've just walked away.
I think you're making a really relevant point there councillor Allgood. At this point in the meeting, we are just receiving a report, but I think the issues that you're raising are relevant. Bear in mind though, the legislation doesn't preclude coun-